Good afternoon, everybody. I want to thank you all for coming. I'm going to introduce who's here first. We have some very special guests throughout the board. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Isaiah Thomas from Philadelphia. Thank you so much for making the drive over here. It's really important to us to hear from the actual author of this legislation that we have adopted, almost verbatim, I would say, at this point. We also have Professor David Harris joining us. He is going to be with us online. And Mr. Harris, we're going to start with you first after I introduce everybody, because I know you have some time constraints. Myself, of course. We also have Tiara Bradford from ACLU. Tiara, welcome. We also have the iconic Tim Stevens from BPEP. Welcome, Mr. Stevens. Manny Nasir is here from One Hood. Thank you for being here. Autumn Redcross from Abolitionist Law Center also joins us. Jesse Wozniak, or I should say Brandy Fisher, with Alliance for Police Accountability. And we're honored to have you all here. And with Councilman Thomas, we have Dom Miller, Chief of Staff, who made sure he got here safely today. We have Keira Bradford Gray. Keira Bradford Gray is a former Chief Defender Association of Philadelphia. Thank you for being here. And did I miss anybody? Oh, I'm sorry. We also have our council members, Erica Strasberger, Councilman Bobby Wilson. Others will be joining us. And our own author is joining us right now, Councilman Ricky Burgess. So thank you all for being here. So this meeting is about police reform, much anticipated for me, you know. We started, you know, taking this up when Reverend Burgess turned in his legislation, which mimics Philadelphia's. And, you know, we're going to talk about those differences, and we hope to learn a lot about the whole process and as to what you went through, Councilman Thomas, in Philadelphia. So with that, you know, our local professional from the University of Pittsburgh, and anytime you read an article over police reform, he's usually headlining it because he is, you know, an expert in this division. And I will open it up to you for opening remarks, Professor Harris. If you're, if you hear me, you can begin anytime you'd like.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much for inviting me. I have to start with a little bit of regret because I have to go teach. I don't regret teaching, but I will have to leave before 2:00. But I am honored by your invitation and the privilege of talking to you today. I'm the Sally Ann Semenko, endowed Chair and Professor of Law at the University of Pittsburgh School of Law. And I've been studying traffic stops and how they are used by police across the country to investigate other offenses, not for traffic safety, but other offenses about which there is no evidence, and the racially disproportionate impact of those traffic stops. I've been studying that since, oh, gosh, 1994 or '95. That really dates me, I know. But it also gives me a little bit of perspective. I am the author of, I hate props, but this is my book. This was the very first book, Profiles in Injustice, on the whole phenomenon. And I have written roughly a dozen different journal articles about this subject. Therefore, it is a great privilege to be able to speak to you about this new piece of legislation, which I applaud. I got involved in this, watching the Supreme Court, watching the effect of its rulings on local policing, and particularly the effect of local policing applying those rules to Black and Brown communities across the country. I saw this first when I was a practicing attorney. And then, when I was in the legal academy, I began to look at it in different ways and write about it. And my first piece was published in 1997. That is this one right here from the Journal of Criminal Law and Criminology. And the significance of that particular piece was that I got to talk about it in front of the Black Caucus led by John Conyers in 1996. This article became the basis of the Traffic Stop Statistics Act, the very first piece of legislation on racial profiling in the United States, certainly in the United States Congress. The, I can sum up for you in just a minute or so, all of the research that I've done in the, in the various, over the couple of decades I've been involved in this. There are four basic points, and I think they bear very strongly on the law that the council has just passed. Number one, the idea that traffic stops are used disproportionately against Black and Brown people to investigate things other than traffic safety is a real phenomenon. Now, that may sound, you know, blindingly obvious, but I guarantee you, back when I sat in the first meetings with the Department of Justice in 1997, and many other meetings, it was not an accepted fact. It is, it was then true, and it is true now, and it has always been so. Point number two, when police stop drivers and begin to use traffic safety as a pretext to investigate other things, Black and Brown drivers are more likely to be questioned at length, to have lengthier stops, and to be searched, and to have their vehicles searched. Point number three, those searches of Black and Brown people are actually less productive in terms of either arrest or gathering contraband than searches of comparable white drivers. It is exactly the opposite of what people seem to assume when they justify racial profiling. And point number four, this practice causes real damage. It does not find lots of guns or drugs. On the contrary, the take on this is actually very, very low, less than 1%, for instance, for guns nationwide. But what you get instead is you get the occasional catastrophe, something like what happened to Mr. Leon Ford here in Pittsburgh. You get people sometimes killed, but much more frequently, you get Black and Brown drivers stopped for no reason, and they know why this goes on. It is a story in every barber shop, in every family room, across every kitchen table. Grandpa, father, brother, sister have experienced it. That is my experience listening to people. So in the early days, the objective was to collect data on this. That was the recommendation in this article. That was the point of Congressman Conyers' first, first piece of legislation on this. And he went from there to successive pieces of legislation in the Congress, which ultimately did not pass on the federal level, but they did pass in many states. Many police departments, hundreds, put policies in place prohibiting racial profiling. And many states passed laws that said, you will collect data. And the thinking around that time, myself included, was, once there's data, we'll see change. Fast forward now 15 or so years, and I'm sorry to say, we were wrong. Plenty of data out there, yes, but it shows the same practices continuing. There is a phenomenal book written by a man named Frank Baumgartner from the University of North Carolina that was published a few years ago called Suspect Citizens. He takes all the data from North Carolina, about 20 million traffic stops, and analyzes it. And he comes to exactly the same conclusions that I came to in my book almost 20 years before, that this is a regular practice. It is suffered by Black and Brown people disproportionately. Police use these stops as pretext to investigate other offenses for which they have no evidence, like the presence of guns or drugs. And it is unproductive and damaging entirely. So something more has to be done. It is absolutely crystal clear to me that I was wrong early on, that just collecting the data and being able to make a solid argument would be enough. The practice continues. So a number of law enforcement leaders decided to try something. I've always thought a great way to learn something is to try doing something. And I would point you first and foremost to the police chief of Fayetteville, North Carolina, Harold Medlock, who was aware of this practice, didn't like it, wanted his police officers to stop focusing on stopping people for things like broken taillights and the license plate above the, above the, the light above the license plate and things hanging off the rearview mirror, which were used as pretext to stop people. He thought it was a form of harassment. He didn't want his department involved in that. His Black citizens had been talking about this forever. And he simply said to his officers, no more of that. You will not stop people for that. Instead, you will focus on things that are actually dangerous, actual threats to traffic safety. The upshot was that Black and Brown drivers come into disproportion, out of disproportion on the amount of stops. They are searched much, much less often. It is more or less like what white drivers experience, and traffic safety improves. Crime does not go up. So we can do this. We have taken, along with Philadelphia, in whose steps we're following, we have taken a leadership position here. And honestly, I applaud it. I know that there are some, some good friends who are maybe in the audience there, in our community, who wanted to go slower on this, to have more discussion on it. I completely get that, but we cannot wait. We have been, we have known for years in this town, from the police department's own annual reports, that that disproportionate use of these traffic stops is one of the main things that simply won't go away. And it's a real thorn in the side to members of the communities of color here that I talk to, that I work with, day in and day out. So we are on the right path. Should we tweak it? Should we upgrade it? Should we change it? All those things would be revealed by good, rigorous study of the data to be produced from our new legal regime. So that's what I would strongly recommend, that we produce, collect data on each and every stop, see where there's, whether those disproportions are falling, see what else we can do to improve the situation, follow our traffic safety, follow the data. If we do that, I think we have a very good chance of removing what has been a huge problem for Black and Brown communities here, and actually giving us a shot at improving trust in police. You cannot underestimate the damage this does to trust in police when people know that they and members of their family are being stopped for no reason involving traffic enforcement. And it's all, even if not intended this way, it is all about who they are and what they look like because it keeps happening to them. We must stop that. And this is a good first step. I don't, I don't regard it as the last thing the city should do. It should be adjusted as we get more information. That's what I have to say by way of opening. I'd be glad to answer any questions before I have to go to class. And I thank you very much for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Professor Harris. And, you know, I want to apologize for running late today. I know you blocked off a certain amount of time. And I wish you could be here for questions when council, if council has any questions for you. I personally will tell you, you know, Professor Harris and I had had many conversations over the past month as to police reform and how we both see it. I will tell you, from my community, there was a, what about safety? What about safety? Which I hope, you know, I'm sure Philadelphia had some of those concerns as well. I'm not going to say I'm a complete believer, Professor Harris, but the article you sent me from North Carolina, I'm certainly a little more, you know, confident that, you know, safety will not deter. So, so, so I just want to thank you for being here. And since he has to go, let's just take a minute. Does anybody have anything for Professor Harris before he leaves? We'll probably have questions for you after you leave, but, you know.
I would be happy to answer those, yeah, by email, in writing, whatever you like. And I do apologize, but in my world, students come first. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I really do appreciate that a lot.
Understandable. And thank you for joining us, Professor.
Mr. Coghill, I would like to thank David for his consistency, persistency, and faith in this effort. He's been there for decades. And I appreciate having been a partner with him on our task force and for his continued involvement. And hopefully, all of council will listen to his wisdom.
Tim, I deeply appreciate that coming from you. Thank you so much, my friend. And thank you all.
Thank you, Doc. Thank you, Professor Harris. Let the record be shown. We're joined by our esteemed Council President, Ms. Teresa Kell Smith. Thank you for, for coming out and listening. Sure, no problem. Now, you know, I, I, full disclosure, I, you know, Councilman Thomas and I had a conversation before we came out here, and I informed him I was the only one who did not vote. It was an eight to one vote as to, you know, this legislation. My reason for that was mainly and mostly around the public process. You know, I didn't feel like we had enough public process. So, Councilman Thomas, you know, in your remarks, I'd like to know a little bit about your public process and, you know, just everything you can entail for us. The floor is yours. Again, we thank you for being here. We were all looking forward to hearing, you know, how and why, and how you got it to pass in Philadelphia, and any complications that might arise that you may see. Thank you.
Excuse me. Good afternoon, everybody. First and foremost, thank you. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilmember Coghill, for inviting me and hosting this important conversation. I appreciate the opportunity to meet so many phenomenal legislators and see the great city of Pittsburgh. So first and foremost, thank you for having me. Of course, to your esteemed Council President, thank you for allowing me to be in your space. Appreciate the work that you're doing. I have to, of course, say thank you to Councilmember and Reverend Burgess, the sponsor of the bill. Of course, joined by Councilmember Wilson as well. So thank you. And I have to say a big shout out to my good friend, Councilmember Strasberger. And the great work that you're doing has been an honor to work with you and serve across the Commonwealth as we begin to look at what police reform looks like in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Before I go into my comments, I do want to just communicate for those that are listening and those that are in the audience, the Philadelphia City Council structure, so we can understand some of the dynamics between the two cities, because I think that that's an important component in today's conversation. So Philadelphia is a city of about 1.5, 1.6 million people. Our city council is made up of 17 total people. We have 10 councilmatic districts. We have seven at-large council seats. Five at-large council seats are reserved for the majority party in Philadelphia, like Pittsburgh, that's Democrats. And then there are two council seats that are at-large that are reserved for the minority party. In Philadelphia, our council salary is about $130,000 a year. We have about 20-plus committees as it relates to our city council. Each member of city council is responsible for chairing and vice-chairing a committee. I personally serve as the Chair of the Streets and Services Committee, as well as the Vice Chair for the Children and Youth Committee. Last but not least, the leadership structure as it relates to our city council in Philadelphia, is we have a council president. We have a majority leader. We have a majority whip. We have a deputy whip, as well as a minority leader. So I thought that that context was really important, so we can understand the difference between the cities that we represent and the work that we're required to do as legislators. When we look at the Driving Equality Bill specifically, the three areas that I really wanted to address was the problem, the process, and of course, the solution, which is where we are right now. I'm not going to talk too much about the problem, because I think Professor Harris did a good job of laying out what the issues are. And I think that we all recognize what the issues are. And if we didn't, we wouldn't be here to have this conversation today. What I will say is, like Professor Harris, I too put the children first. As someone who coaches high school, someone who's a teacher by trade, for those of you out here who are sports folks, I still sit on the board for the PIAA of Philadelphia. We're District 12. So often, we talk to PIAA representatives out here because we face similar issues as it relates to representing and working with disadvantaged children, which we all represent in our two different cities. Being as though we represent and work with those young people on a consistent basis, outside of what the data tells us, is imperative that we respect lived experiences. I am someone who grew up in the city of Philadelphia during a stop and first error. 37 years old. I've been driving in the city of Philadelphia for 20 years, and I've been pulled over more than one time per year, based on the 20 years that I've been driving, which means I've been pulled over well over 20 times. And that's just me as a driver, let alone the times that I've been pulled over as a companion. The data suggests that in the city of Philadelphia, the African-American population is less than 50% of the population in our city, but more than 70% of the actual traffic stops in the city of Philadelphia are targeted towards African-Americans. We also know that based on data that is communicated by the Philadelphia Police Department, that was analyzed by the Philadelphia Public Defender's Office, that data basically tells us that a Black person, an African-American person in the city of Philadelphia, pulled over in car search was less likely to have an illegal weapon in or contraband on them than their white counterparts. So it was very difficult for us to understand why Black people were disproportionately pulled over. And we also found alarming stats based on neighborhoods. So we would find in communities and neighborhoods where Black people clearly were not the majority in that particular community, as it relates to the residents in that area, they were still significantly more likely to be stopped as pass-through drivers in those particular communities. So again, we recognize that this is a national problem. If folks have questions a little later throughout the course of our dialogue today, with me from Philadelphia is our former Chief Public Defender, Keira Bradford Gray. And her office is the office that analyzed the data, as well as worked with the coalition that we were able to put together to be able to pass Driving Equality. And so with that being said, I'll go into the process. We introduced the bill well over a year ago. And the bill was originally introduced in its original form to put us in a position to be able to start the conversation around motor vehicle stop in the city of Philadelphia. Upon its introduction, we took the time to communicate to other council members to get enough cosponsors for the legislation so that it could survive a mayor's veto. So upon its original introduction, the legislation had about 10 cosponsors, not considering myself, as well as a couple other members of council who were vocal about their support. But we're curious to see what we would do with far as implementation of citations if we were not going to use an in-person or tangible officer as it relates to enforcement. And so after we introduced the bill in its original version, we actually approached the mayor, as well as the police commissioner, and we asked them to work with us to join a coalition, to create a working group, along with the Public Defender's Office and the community stakeholders, so we could come together as a collective to determine what we felt like would be motor vehicle stop that we could live with, that would not impact public safety from a negative perspective, but would simultaneously address the civil rights violations that we're concerned with as it relates to people of color being disproportionately pulled over. That coalition did come together and work together for over a year, and we were able to come up with seven motor vehicle code violations. Actually, I shouldn't say seven. It was originally eight motor vehicle code violations that we all felt like we could agree upon. Once the working group had the eight motor vehicle code violations, I then returned a new bill back to my colleagues in council. And that new legislation actually was one that was supported by most of my colleagues, but there still raised some concerns. And so once the bill went into committee and we began to do deep dialogue as it relates to the legislative body, we determined that it should be seven motor vehicle code violations. And the one motor vehicle code violation that we took out was actually noise ordinance. And the reason we took out noise ordinance, because in the city of Philadelphia, we seen a significant increase as it relates to complaints, as well as how people modified their vehicles to create issues and concerns as it relates to constituents. And then I also respected the fact that one of my colleagues at the time was working on a different means of enforcement for noise violations that would put us in a position to be able to use technology more than what we currently do. So the bill was then passed out of committee. Oh, no, I'm sorry. The bill was introduced prior to the summer of 2021. And we did that strategically because we wanted to take the entire summer of 2021 to have listening sessions throughout the course of the city of Philadelphia. And that's just what we did. We did them live on the radio. We did Zooms. We had different MCs. We included the press. We sent out press release. And we spent the entire summer engaging in dialogue, answering questions, and putting the constituents to the city of Philadelphia in a position where they were able to participate in the dialogue, but most importantly, that they were informed and comfortable with the direction that we were moving in. That fall, the bill was passed out of committee, and eventually passed into law as it relates to the city of Philadelphia. As we closed out the process, the police commissioner and the mayor asked us for an ample amount of time for training to assure that officers were trained and prepared to be able to enforce the new law. And so the bill was passed in the fall, but it hasn't been implemented into law yet because law enforcement asks for 90 to 120 days for training for the police department in the city of Philadelphia, which is a police force that's well over 6,000 officers. So the bill is scheduled to be implemented into law February 24, which is about nine days from now. Might be eight now. When you're a council member, sometimes, right? Those days just kind of cloud each other. But we're excited that in the next couple of weeks, the legislation will officially be implemented into law. I'm here to answer any questions that any of my colleagues across the Commonwealth may have. More importantly, I just want to go back to what I said in the beginning, where I just really want to thank you for allowing me to be here to communicate my perspective, to communicate the process that we went through in the city of Philadelphia, and to observe the great city of Pittsburgh myself. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Councilman Thomas. I really appreciate that. And, you know, I started out, I had this, you know, very structured. But we were running late, and we got a late start. So, you know, things have changed. So what I would like to do right now is, while I know Councilwoman Strasberger has a commitment, and anybody who has a commitment on our council, I just want to take the time and direct any questions to Mr. Thomas before you go. Councilwoman Strasberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I really want to commend you for being someone who is, you know, was the sort of sold no vote on this bill, actually taking the time to dig in and learn more. And I hope, you know, changing your mind on this bill and getting to a point where you can, you can feel that it's both protective and safe, you know, that it's truly accomplishing public safety. Councilmember Thomas, it's been such a pleasure working with you on sort of items that we can, you know, we can both work on across the Commonwealth and comparing notes with other cities. And I really appreciate your convening of city leaders from across the Commonwealth on public safety, matters of public safety. And I guess, you know, I don't have a specific question. I guess my only comment is that I think there's, even though this bill is already passed, you can always open a backup again. We can always look at, you know, further amending it. And I, I think it would be worthwhile for us to have a conversation at today's table, even though I won't be able to stay, about companion legislation that might not have been passed along with this bill in particular, but that has passed already by, by this chamber, by this body, such as a Data and Transparency Bill around public safety and others that have come out, you know, come out of this body from years past. So I think what we can really work to emulate, most of all, though, is the, is the public awareness and public communication transparency that you took, that you took on yourself and with your colleagues in Philadelphia, so that, you know, as we work to maybe make some changes to this legislation, but also, I think what more importantly, just get the buy-in from, from, from as many partners who have really strong opinions about this and have lived experiences as possible, that we're, that we're emulating you. Any, I guess, one question is, any, any lessons learned from the experience that you had when you took it out to the community that you would share with us as we, as we go through that exercise?
I think one of the biggest lessons learned was how much misinformation is passed to people as it relates to the impact that motor vehicle stop stops have on public safety. In the city of Philadelphia, and our former Chief Public Defender can dive into this a little bit more, we looked at a year where we examined over 300,000 motor vehicle stop stops. And what we found, and I say this because as elected officials, we know soundbouts are important. We found that less than 1% of the time, when someone was actually pulled over, did police find some type of weapon in or contraband when we look specifically at the motor vehicle code traffic stops that are involved in the legislation. And so we say less than 1% because we know that sounds better. But the reality is, it was in, it was 0.17% of the time, right? So you're not talking about less than 1%. You're talking about less than 2.5, less than 0.25% of the time. So just dispelling the myth that motor vehicle code stops have a positive impact on public safety was the biggest lesson learned, really getting people in a position to really understand how random it is to decide that you're going to pull someone over and think that's going to be a mechanism to deter crime. And the city of Philadelphia, over the last two years, we've seen a record amount of homicides taking place in the city of Philadelphia. And during that time, police were permitted to pull over and stop as many people as they wanted to. And we've seen that that did not deter some of the crime issues that we're facing. Like other big cities across the country, we're also seeing an increase as it relates to motor vehicle codes being, motor vehicles being stolen. Right? So we know that this type of policing, not only does it not deter crime, but I think most importantly, with what Professor Harris talked about, was it actually has a negative impact on the relationships between communities of color, poor communities, and law enforcement. So in reality, what it does is it, it actually makes crime worse, because now people are less likely to cooperate and rely on law enforcement than what they would be if they did not have some of the negative experiences that they've had with motor vehicle stop stops. Unfortunately, for far too many people of color, their first introduction into law enforcement is a motor vehicle stop. And we have data that essentially shows that. So we are concerned about some of the negative narratives out there as it relates to public safety, but we feel obligated to provide as much education and information as possible. And a big part of that And a big part of that is the support that we have from the police department, from the police commissioner, as well as the mayor and the mayor's administration.
Councilman Thomas, thank you. Now, if other council members don't have any other obligations, I'd rather get into the rest. Would you like to go, Councilwoman Wilson? Okay, sure. You know what? I'll turn that over to Councilman Wilson for questions.
So I just want to thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Councilman Thomas. And I want to thank everyone else for being here as well. But I just want to ask you just a specific question about the bill. Or actually, it's around the data. Cause what really wrapped my head around this was whenever I saw the report, which was an internal report that we received from our public safety data analysts was that I believe the graph started around 2016, 2017, and it showed all traffic, it took into account all traffic stops that would relate to the bill. And, and, and it kind of put everyone who was arrested, you know, based on that, you know, basically the stop turned into an arrest. And from 2016 to around 2020, 70% of the arrests were small. You know, the amount of arrests that turned, that, you know, started as a traffic stop. And then, I'm sorry, the amount of traffic stops that turned into an arrest was a small, small number comparatively. I mean, the numbers were disproportionately, you know, more black people were pulled over than white. Given that our population of black people was 27, 20, 23%?
Twenty-three.
Huh?
Twenty-three.
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 So 70% to 80% of the arrests were black from 2016 to 2020. And in 2021, we were about 100. So all arrests were individuals that are black. And so it was really wrapped my head around the urgency to try and understand what's going on here. And that's largely why I was supportive. I was supportive initially when I was introduced, but really it's, you know, concerning and you know, my question is just, did you all, did, did, like the city of Philadelphia and all the legislators, they look at that data as well in terms of like, what type of arrest that was? Because in Pittsburgh, likely probably like Philadelphia, besides traffic stops, we're looking at, you know, all ways to improve the public safety, you know, the whole, the whole department. And one way is diversion. And I'm just curious as.
I'm glad you asked that question. And I'm even happier that Chief Public, former Chief Public Defender Kiera Bradford Gray is with us because her office analyzed that data front to back. And she was probably more equipped to answer that question around the data and the impact of the data, Chief Public Defender.
Well, thank you. First of all, thank you for having me here. And thank you for that very astute observation. Sometimes when you're looking at arrests, you're thinking that someone has done something which had either a gun or contraband. Well, my office actually looked at arrests that had to, that led to assault of behavior between the officer and the person because of the escalation of the situation. And so those are situations that we never want to occur, especially when someone's being pulled over for maybe an air freshener in their car window. It should never get to that point. So it just really showed us the magnitude of the issue. But I think that a data analysis around the types of arrests that were being introduced into the system, who's being introduced into system for what? And what led to that introduction to the system is something that we need to look at because the impact of that introduction has dire consequences, especially in Pennsylvania for life. And I really do mean that when someone is convicted of a crime, that is a lifetime conviction here in Pennsylvania. So we've got to look at whether or not there's an entry to the system because of that unnecessary stop in interaction and how we can lessen the impact of the system on certain communities.
Thank you. I just really just had that initial question. I know I want to stay for as long as I can with all the great information. So, but I just please want to get the one question I had in.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Want to say, I just want to take a couple of minutes myself and I want to be honest with you. I wanted law enforcement at the table. I just feel like law enforcement should be at the table because of safety concerns, things of that nature. Much to my dismay, law enforcement is skeptical and scared to come to the table. Okay. For whatever reasons, you know, maybe it's afraid to say the same wrong thing, but the law enforcement I speak to in the city of Pittsburgh, therefore, most of these police reforms that, that we're talking about today. But I did want to bring three things up that I hear from law enforcement. And I want to be clear, I don't speak for law enforcement. I speak to law enforcement though. Okay. I have my family background and just, you know, the force I know very well. A lot of them live in my district. First and foremost, and I'm sure you have this in Philadelphia, Councilman Thomas. Relating around the, we have here in Pittsburgh, nine other different agencies, including county and university of Pittsburgh and different police departments, okay, which we don't feel, at least I don't feel, at least the policemen I talk to don't feel that they are going to, you know, fall in suit with us. So that's a concern. I know it's a concern of many of the police chiefs I've talked to, many of the police officers I've talked to as to the confusion, maybe, I guess, when we're driving around and somebody has a headlight out and they're pulled over by a university police officer. You know, and just not being in suit, not, so I didn't know if you had a process, did you speak to your other agencies? Are they also in line with your, your law? Or is it, you know? So you could take that question.
So in Philadelphia, we do have a number of different partners who are responsible for policing neighborhoods. We have the Philadelphia Housing Authority and they have police officers specifically under their jurisdiction. We have universities such as University of Pennsylvania in Temple, and they have police under their jurisdiction. But fortunate for us, those organizations, the entities are responsible for contracting with the city of Philadelphia. Any laws that we make as a municipality, those entities and organizations are responsible for making sure that their law enforcement officers are complying with them. Now, when we talk about out of our jurisdiction officers, such as state police or federal police, when you look at the entire gamut of all of the things that law enforcement are responsible for, right? And I would argue that we ask police to do too much, right? But when you look at the entire gamut of all of the things law enforcement are responsible for, when you're talking about outside police officers, such as state or federal police officers, often when you're asking them to come into your town or in your jurisdiction, it's not traffic stops that has gotten out of control to the point where you're asking them to come. You're normally asking them to come to address serious crimes. And so we're optimistic that we will be able to maintain relationships with state and federal partners. Because anytime we need them to come into the city of Philadelphia, the focus is not around traffic and traffic enforcement. The focus is around serious crimes and that is where we need police thinking, working and assuring that they're putting their energy. We're also a little concerned in the city of Philadelphia as it relates to lawsuits. We spend anywhere from $10 to $30 billion a year on lawsuits and payouts as a municipality. And a lot of those lawsuits start with a motor vehicle code violation. So we want to be more efficient as a city. We want to put our police in a position where they could be a little more successful than the things that we're asking them to enforce right now. And we feel like moving away from minor traffic violations, which costs us the equivalence of one officer working for eight and a half years consecutively. That's how much time we spend in one year on traffic stops. We feel like it'll put us in a position where our city will be more efficient, will improve our relationships with communities of color. And hopefully we get to the position where we will not have to rely on outside law enforcement as much as we do currently.
Yep, absolutely. And I will say, we welcome that in the way of, you know, our police respond from everything from a bark, dog barks too loud to somebody had stepped over their line and their property. So, and even Professor Harris, so many conversations I've had with him, he has noted that. You know, the fact that we take our police officers and we get them doing the things we really need them to do and not worry about the minor traffic stops is very welcoming. And I will say, within the police community here, it is welcoming too, you know? So the other thing was, you know, like, are we going to be, are we allowed, meaning Reverend, maybe you can answer this. Are we going to be backing up? So for instance, if a state police officer pulls somebody over on one of our state roads that lie within the city of Pittsburgh, and Kiera, if you could answer this, it'd be great to. Will our Pittsburgh police still back them up without breaking an ordinance? Meaning, you know, a state trooper pulls somebody over, they call for backup, sometimes just normally or naturally, if it's a wet, you know, you know, dangerous day as far as inclement weather, they just want more lights there and somebody to back them up. And I don't know if you have that issue or if you've addressed that or Rev, maybe you could speak to that. And that's it for me. And then I'm going to go on the other guest if anybody could address that.
I'll go first and then if you don't mind, Chief Public, I mean, what I'll say is this, just speaking from lived experience. You know, I consider myself somewhat of an expert at being pulled over by law enforcement. Very rarely will you be pulled over by a state trooper for a motor vehicle code violation that is not a direct public safety hazard, right? So when you talk about the legislation in the city of Philadelphia, we're talking about the relocation, the seven minor motor vehicle code violations is the relocation of a license plate as long as it's still visible, right? Often on state highways, you're moving in a way that it's hard to even see something like that. You could put admission and inspection stickers in the same category, very difficult to see when driving on a state highway. Minor damage to the bumper, something similar to like a car freshener that would impair the vision. One taillight being out, right? Cause that's really important to think about, especially with newer model cars. But I think the one that would maybe touch some of our state officers is the 60 day grace period on expired registration. And so for us, we're actively exploring exactly what that's going to look like. I definitely will pass it to Chief Public, former Chief Public Defender Kiera Bradford Gray. But I do want to note that again, when you're looking at this idea of bringing in state troopers in for you in your county, it might be different than us in Philadelphia county, our municipality is also our county. So it may be different for us. We, we do welcome state partners. We do want law enforcement to be able to address crime and other issues. Unfortunately, we recognize that traffic stops do not address crime. We're a hundred percent sure that data tells us that pulling more people over does not put us in a position to deter the crime that we see in the city of Philadelphia. And for us, during the time of negotiation as it relates to the coalition, we talked to a number of different cities all across the country, right? I've talked to folks in Oakland and I've testified in Oakland City Council, not just about what we're doing in Philadelphia, but most importantly about the model that they implemented to address the issue of people of color being disproportionately pulled over. So big cities all across the country are acknowledging this as a problem, but more importantly, trying to identify the fabric and DNA of legislation that particularly applies to their municipality that they can implement to be able to deter some of these stops.
Yeah. Well, I thank you for that comment because I think that's an area that needs to be further explored. Will police run a file of their own policies if they're called in to back up a state law enforcement officer? And my answer to that is I don't know. But what I do think that this dialogue will lead into better policy for our entire Commonwealth. And I do know that right now, the Pennsylvania state law enforcement community is working with the Community Advisory Commission, I am on that commission, to really look at better practices and policies in our Commonwealth as it relates to policing. If local jurisdictions are starting to ask police for assistance and starting to let them know that in our locality, we have decided that this is not an effective policing tool, then I would expect and hope that the Pennsylvania state police will adopt the same policy. So I think this is the beginning of a very good dialogue. I think it needs to be hashed out. I think legal needs to be involved, of course. And of course, the police union will be involved. But I think this is a step in the right direction for everyone to come under one umbrella.
Thank you. Can I, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind? I just want to add two more things and then I promise I'll be done. The first thing is our bill is marred with a data component, which is part of the requirement as it relates to motor vehicle code stops in the city of Philadelphia. So now when someone is pulled over, police will be required to communicate everything that took place within that stop, including the demographic of the person, why they were pulled over, where they were pulled over, and the end results of that traffic stop. We feel like that's important first and foremost, because we want to make sure that new traffic stops are not being used as a means to violate people's civil rights. But we also want to make sure that we're not having any negative impacts on public safety. It's one thing for me to sit here and say these bills will not have a negative impact on public safety. It's another thing for us to have the bill that has data requirement to be communicated to all of us so that all of the public can analyze what's taking place during the traffic stop. So we can assess what type of impact is having on our particular municipalities. And of course, as legislators, we all know, we can offer amendments or different recommendations to be able to modify the legislation, even after it's passed into law. The second thing that I really just want to advise the legislative body about, and it's a concern that we have in the city of Philadelphia. Part of the reason why we are comfortable moving in the direction that we're moving in with the driving equality is because we're going to move more towards using technology to enforce minor motor vehicle code violations in the city of Philadelphia. We've explored a number of different counties across the country where they use technology to enforce motor vehicle code violations that we consider a public safety hazard, like speeding. We feel like if they can do that in communities that are not necessarily in communities of color and do not see an increase in their insurance, right? Because that's another myth that's out there is that your insurance will increase. And we know that that's not true because we know there are communities that are not communities of color where they use technology to enforce things like speeding. We're optimistic that we're going to be successful in the work that we're doing, but we have to be positive. And so that's why the data bill is really important. But more importantly, that's why we have to monitor the use of technology because what we don't want is ill advised consequences, which include communities of color and or poor communities then being disproportionately ticketed because the technology and the technology equipment exists more in community, poor communities and communities of color. So we are monitoring the process and that's one of the ill advised consequences that we are paying attention to. And we want to assure do not have a negative impact on our constituents in Philadelphia.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate you.
And don't, don't feel bad about jumping in. That's why you're here. Okay. So we want you to say all you need to say before you go today. Just on a personal note, you know, I want to say like Reverend Burgess, I feel a calling to be involved in police reform, you know? And I want to be involved in so many different ways. I thank you for bringing this to the table. And now I hope it's gratifying to you that it's catching hold in some other major cities, at least in Pennsylvania. You know, however, I feel like there's so many other avenues, you know, as Councilman Wilson mentioned about the arrest records, you know? And Councilwoman Gross and I have talked about this, you know, many times as to warrants, bench warrants, you know? You can get a, you served a bench warrant if you don't show up for court for, you know, an unpaid traffic ticket or lack of paying child support. I think that's just another avenue. It's not for today. I don't think necessarily for me to talk about, but oh, good. Great. Great. So, 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 you know, I just think that's just one of many other avenues that we can look into. And I think the arrest, I think the facts may show their arrest records, why black people were being arrested more besides the disproportionate pullovers are probably from bench warrants or warrants of some sort. So just another avenue to look into. And you know, Councilman Thomas, you know, we'll work hand in hand with you once we get to something, but Councilwoman Gross, I
Show my issue.
I told you, I was, I told you I was going to drag her into police reform and go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So this is, right. I was just trying to find my reference materials. I apologize. I don't have them in front of me. But we know in our Allegheny County jail that the entire, basically the entire population has never been convicted of a crime, right? They're just there waiting. Some people are waiting for years while incarcerated for their day in court. We also know that they're by and large, you might be able to speak better to this than, I don't have the numbers in front of me. Thank you. That oftentimes it's functioning, here in Allegheny County, like a debtor's prison. The reason they're sitting there waiting is because maybe they have court fines. Maybe they have not shown up to a date to have a court date with their landlord. Right? And that those warrants, because we've pulled someone over, right? If our police have them pulled over, they are required to serve that warrant. And that's escalation right there. So we have a lot to untangle here. It is, it's there's a fear that I have and many people share and our advocate community has really brought this forward to us, to this table. I think it's rightful to be highlighting the problems in our criminal justice system, which we don't have control of at this table. We are not the county. We are just the city. But to any extent that we can remove our involvement from this disproportionately inequitable system that is imprisoning our citizens. And we should do so. And I think this is one of those issues, right? That we can have control over what we choose, when and where we choose to pull people over and why. So I'm supportive for that reason. The amount of incarceration has destroyed our city neighborhoods, has destroyed our city's families. And we can remove ourselves from at least a portion of it with this bill. So that's one of the reasons I, I'm I'm still concerned about what more we can do, but this is one thing that we know we have some control over. Have you started to untangle that interaction effect? Like court debt especially, what kind, do you have numbers on kind of what kinds of warrants are being issued? And since you are a county, while we are not, kind of what role your courts are playing in the issuance of those warrants?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. Those are really great questions. And right now we are seeing a choice in terms of priorities on issuing warrants in Philadelphia because of the slowing down of the system and the courts process due to COVID. So there are priority shifting, which really looks at what's going to get us closer to advancing public safety. What are the warrants that are more troubling? So we're seeing warrants. So we're seeing warrants that have to do with bodily or bodily harm or physical injury to another, uh, that are being enforced probation warrants. Where someone who has been charged with certain offenses, um, has not come in. And you know, those are real right targets of our systems resources, because those are the things that are creating public safety. So when you're talking about things that you are, um, owing money, owing a fine, owing a debt with no violence attached to it. Uh, I think there's better ways we can serve those things rather than using and taxing our resources. But also wasting taxpayer dollars by housing people while they're losing jobs, while they're losing, losing housing, while they're losing stabilities that make them consistently better for their communities. So I do think when we're talking about public safety, we need to reorient the conversation to what are we doing that's more constructive versus destructive? And so I think we're seeing right now with the, with a lot of the, um, issues that we're facing during COVID. That police in, at least in our neighborhoods or districts are improving their, um, their priorities. And looking and focusing on more things that are creating public safety. So this is a really great thing to analyze, like what are we doing and what return on investment is it giving us?
See what I got you into? I think I have a firm commitment from Councilwoman Gross to look into this area. Um, can we make that public?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. No going back now. Uh, Councilman Wilson?
Let's relate to the, the topic. So I just want to expand on what we're talking about, because. I brought up some data earlier and the data was a little, um, you know, we were still getting, getting as it was twenty twenty-one was, was ending when this bill passed. Um, when I said the number was low, I. It was twelve arrests. So prior years might've been like twenty arrests. And so with that, you know, there was urgency there, but also what we're talking about. It'll let, this allows us to talk about what's going on even in, you know, when you're not even in the car. You know, people that are outside, people that are homeless, people that are without safe housing. Are carrying more, you know, there, there could be in situations where there's far more arrests that are happening, at least in Pittsburgh. Uh, based on people that are outside and in the motor vehicle, uh, code that we would change here. So I just want to state that this is super important, but also this speaks to a larger issue of how are we really working on the version in the city of Pittsburgh? So that spoke to me because representing District One and with the amount of people that are not housed and that are not in safe housing. And, um, everything the city is doing to ensure that, you know, we are, uh, thinking about that and thinking about. The version and really just meeting people in place. So we, uh, you know, have implemented outreach program through a public health system, uh, out through Allegheny Health Network. And so I just think to, you know, really at the end of the day, we're talking about is people that are affected by. The, the, you know, I guess I might not know the exact term of the criminal justice system. And they, there's, there's definitely other routes to go. So I, I'm not sure. It sounds like in the city of Philadelphia that there was far higher arrests. Based on, like they were used, they were openly saying that they were using as like a policing measure.
Yeah. You mean, um, the, the car stops?
Yeah, because on, you know, when I.
Initiative that is supposed to help deter crime or prevent crime. And I think we see by the.
Hundreds, hundreds of arrests for motor vehicle.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah. Hundreds of arrests. Yeah.
Uh, is that something that, uh, public, as a public, is that something that the, your police, police department is openly saying that they were doing tactically?
So they're not.
That's not what we're, I don't think that, that's not what we're getting.
No, they're not saying those things, but the data tells a different story.
Yeah, right. The data. Okay.
Yeah. So that's what we were.
I just want to clarify.
No, they weren't saying those things. Yeah. My knowledge.
No, I, not, not, not to our knowledge, but again, we looked at a year where we examined over three hundred thousand.
Right, right, right.
You know, just the, the fact that you have over three hundred thousand traffic stops in a year. And the fact that you see so little contraband when cars are searched and there are so far fewer arrests. You know, one would ask yourself, is that the most efficient way for the city to be spending his dollars? And, you know, us over here, we would argue that is not.
Okay.
Hey, thank, thank you, Councilman Wilson. And, um, I just want to shift gears a little bit. Um, you know, we also have some other very important guests here. And really the, the reason we, that I called this post agenda originally was because, um. ACLU, BPEP and the others I'm going to introduce didn't quite feel like their voices were being heard. And Councilman Thomas, uh, if you'll just listen closely as to, uh, I think, um, whether it's Brandy, I think they're. Possibly want to add a little bit to our bill, but I think it's important to note that our bill is identical to yours. Other than the registration and admission, we have sixty days and then we, then police officers will pull somebody over after a sixty day violation. I think yours goes, there is no time limit on that. And we also have an annual review, which I'm glad to, glad to know, you know, as to, you know, maybe it's a traffic study or there are more pedestrians killed. Because people were driving on without lights, things of that nature. So, so I just wanted to point that out. And I really wanted to start in, and. No particular order, um, unless you all have any time constraints, any of you? Okay. Um, well, Tiara, you seem like you're ready to go. Um, why don't we, you, you step up and, um, with that, this is Tiara Bradford from ACLU.
Hi, everyone. Hi, members of the city council. My name is Tiara Bradford and Criminal Justice Policy Advocate for the ACLU of Pennsylvania. Uh, and I am so happy that other folks went first, basically took a lot of what I was going to say right out of my mouth. Um, we echo a lot of the comments that David Harris made earlier at the beginning of this meeting. Um, fun fact, uh, Professor Harris, actually my professor when I was in law school, so it was nice seeing him talk. So essentially, um, first off, I'm happy that we're having a real discussion about these traffic stops. And that we are acknowledging that there are racial disparities, um, in these traffic stops and how they have been historically used, um, in a negative way against black and brown communities. I think that's very important, um, that we've said that. And initially, yes, ACLU of Pennsylvania, we were part of the groups who, uh, did want the legislation to slow down. But that's only because, um, like Professor, uh, David Harris was saying earlier, um, we wanted more study on these traffic stops. Like what, yes, these traffic stops are happening, but which traffic stops? Like what are the actual reasonings behind, um, people being pulled over? And I think that's important because there's a list of different violations that are now secondary violations that, um, officers can't pull people over for. Um, however, there wasn't any outreach done to the community to know if those are the violations they feel are being used pretextually against them. You know, there wasn't a true study of, I know that there is data out there, um, around traffic stops that the police bureau has to provide. But it doesn't go into very much detail and there's not much analysis around that. And so that's, you know, we're very, we're happy that this, um, that the legislation passed and we are fine with what it says for now. Um, but we very much want, uh, more data collection analysis and study to be done to potentially add different violations in the future. Cause there might be other violations that aren't mentioned, um, that are actual issues in communities. Um, and so, you know, we wanted that study and, um, we did, we do want to hear from folks in the community. We want to hear from people who are consistently pulled over, uh, to know why they think they're being pulled over. We think that's, um, very important and we hope that's the next step that happens with this legislation. Um, and additionally, again, I'm, I'm so happy that Councilman Thomas was able to speak first because he touched on, uh, the complimentary bill that was passed in Philadelphia. Um, and I think that is very important that we, uh, introduce something similar in, um, Pittsburgh to continue. Uh, data collection analysis, um, and accountability around these traffic stops, not just collecting data like Professor Harris said, but actually doing something. About the data that we collect. So we think those, um, two things are very important. Um, and I submitted, uh, my materials in written form, uh, my comment in written form, but also. Um, I was able to get a comment from the police accountability unit and from the Philly Defenders Association. Uh, where they discussed the importance of that second complimentary, uh, data collection, um, and accountability bill. So I, we strongly urge, uh, that we introduce something similar in Pittsburgh, um, and continue to do studies around traffic stops. And yeah, those are my comments, keeping it short. Thank you all for coming and, um, adding your very important input to the session.
Thank you, Tiara. Appreciate you being here. Next, I'm going to go to, uh, Manny Nasser from One Hood. Manny, you're up.
Peace, peace. I usually speak softly. I'm gonna try to speak up. Happy to be here. Uh, you said, um, my name is Manny. I'm here, uh, representing One Hood. I'm the advocacy and policy civic engagement coordinator. But I think it's more important for me to say that I'm a young black man from Homewood, right? And which is why, or that is why this conversation is so important to me. I've been pulled over and I've been stopped on the streets more times than I can count. And I have a lot of friends and I have a lot of family members who have been beat up by police officers arrested on petty charges. And, uh, most of the work that I've done in a community, um, not necessarily with One Hood. Has been centered around the Allegheny County jail. And of course, we know, um, the disproportionate population of the jail compared, um, to the county itself. And that's not a mistake. It's, it's by design. It's important for me to say that, uh, policing in America is, is rooted in white supremacy. And, and we all know that, uh, and, and I've read, uh, the new Jim Crow. I've read slavery by another name. Um, I'm sure everybody knows about the film, The Thirteenth, that came out that actually shows, um, or, or draws a direct line between slavery and, uh, modern day policing. That leads to mass incarceration. And, uh, when people are incarcerated, like their first point of contact is the police. And, and Pittsburgh, according to Wikipedia, um, the police department is eighty-four percent white. You know what I mean? So I, regardless of, you know, what, what the rules are, what the laws are, what they're supposed to be doing. We see what they're doing because we see what the results are, right? And, and my only concern about this discussion or, uh, what happens going forward is, um. Why it's not completely bad, you know what I'm saying? Why, why they're not completely prevented from being able to stop and frisk somebody? Because they feel like it or be able to pull somebody over because they feel like it, because that is the reality, uh, believe it or not. I remember one of the last times I got pulled over. Wasn't doing anything wrong, you know what I mean? Uh, you know, joke, yelped me up. I had a passenger. Search them, you know, I mean, searched the car, didn't even give me a reason why they pulled me over. Didn't find anything. They just drove away. Said, okay, have a good one. To, to this day, I'm still trying to figure out why that happened. Now, I mean, or maybe it was a coincidence that everybody in the car was black and all the officers were white, uh, may, maybe. And, um, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm happy to be, I'm not a politician, so I'm not speaking on, you know, all, all, all the details, all the ins and outs. I'm speaking as a community member who has been affected by policing and who will be affected by what you all decide, um, to this day. Uh, but because, and I'm reiterating, um, the direct connection between slavery and modern day policing. That's the reason why, um, I'm not really for police reform. I'm actually for abolition. And, uh, I thank you for that. Or I thank you for listening to that, I should say.
No problem. Manny, Manny, thank you for being here. Uh, Westinghouse Bulldog guy then? Is that right? Yeah, it was a brochure bullet. At the time it was a bullet, but, uh, changed that to the bulls. So Manny, you did touch on one thing I wanted to, uh, elaborate on, you know, with, uh, population of the city, city. And if you look at our police force, not only our police force, our fire department, paramedics, Mr. Stevens and I have talked about this and I know we're on the same page about this. I would love to see that bolstered. I would love to see more minorities on our police department. I don't know what's holding us back. I don't know what the issues are there. Whether it's, whether it's recruitment or what, but, uh, that absolutely has to reflect the population and even more so as far as I'm concerned. So, so thank you, Manny. Appreciate, um, you know, you, you being here. And I think you make a pretty good politician if you decide. So, um, with that next, uh, you know, I'd like to go to Autumn Red Cross to my left, but abolitionist law center, Autumn.
Thank you. My name is Autumn Red Cross. I am with the abolitionist law center. I'm the founding director of the Court Watch Program that we have there. And I'm now the movement building director of organizing and advocacy. I'm originally from Philadelphia too, and live just outside the city. I do have a prepared statement that our organization drafted. And it's a council member Ricky Burgess recently announced an ordinance intended to affect the way police. In Pittsburgh conducts stop and frisks when pedestrians suspected of having committed a crime. Stop and frisks were. Where police temporarily detain and conduct a limited search of a person based on an officer's reasonable suspicion. That the person committed a crime is an irredeemable practice that functions as a tool to racially profile and harass our communities. We urge the council to expand the ordinance to include all stop and frisks and to ban the practice altogether. The current ordinance requires only that police officers memorialize the reasons that they believe constitute reasonable sus- suspicion. That a person has committed a crime prior to temporarily detaining them. Reasonable suspicion is itself a term that can mean whatever a police officer wants it to mean. Merely existing in a so-called high crime area can be deemed suspicious by police officers and courts. While the ordinance would provide more data on stop and frisks that Pittsburgh police officers conduct. It will do little to reduce its practice, a practice that is unequivocally performed in a racially discriminatory manner. Perpetuates significant harm on our communities and does nothing to improve public safety. Pittsburgh already publicizes some information related to stop and frisks. In two thousand and twenty, Pittsburgh police reported eight hundred and twenty-five field contact warrantless searches and seizures on pedestrians. Two thirds of the people stopped were black. Police reported that three thousand warrantless searches and seizures overall. Seventy-one percent of those people were black. Three hundred and twenty-five, three hundred and twenty-seven of these warrantless searches and seizures were conducted on children. Children ten years old or younger. Eighty-four percent of these searches and seizures on children were black. Nine hundred and one people were frisks during traffic stops. Seventy-seven percent of them were black. Stop and frisks as practiced as often. Uh, defended by police apologists as a vital way to keep people safe. While the number of warrantless searches and seizures has trended downward over the last ten years. Reported violent offenses have decreased by almost half in that same period of time. Stop and frisks are an integral part of the system of apartheid policing in the city and do nothing to further public safety. Is it, city should end the practice altogether and devote its resources to housing, education, food security and other material needs that actually keep people safe. And reduce harm in our communities. So while we believe that stop and frisks is, uh. Um, and limiting stop and frisks is a, is a good practice. And, um, proposed proposal by the council member, uh, Burgess. We think that, um, banning them altogether would be even better. And I just feel compelled to echo Manny's, um, sentiments. And as a black woman, as a mother myself, I, um, want to comment on the feeling. Um, you know, the experience, the true experience of being stopped by the police while you're black. And then having to explain to your children that they might be stopped by the police. Or no reason or any reason that they could understand. And I remember acutely when my son was first driving around the city of Pittsburgh, of course, where we're from. And he was young. He was a teenager and he didn't tell me at the time that he was stopped because he knew that it would have made me scared. But he had, um, a back brake light that was out. And, um, not only was he stopped, but there were six police who came to him at his car. It was a brake light. And you, it's, it's a feeling that you just can't describe about being out of control. And being unable to protect your children because you don't know how it might escalate. So many people who are parents of black and brown children have to resort to simply telling them, hey, this is how you need to behave in case you're stopped. You know, these are the things that you need to do. Please do not be threatening or even look the police officer in the eyes because that could be red as so. Please make sure that your hands are seen and on the, the steering wheel so that the police doesn't feel that you're about to do something wrong. When you're reaching for your license or you're identifying information that's in the, the glove box. Make sure you articulate this is what you're doing and move slowly. Do you have to tell your children this?
You asking me?
So I'm one who has. Thank you for being at the table and inviting me to speak here and I'd love to talk more.
Autumn, thank you.
Can I interject, Mr. Chair?
Can I interject, Mr. Chairman, real quick? Just, just based on that emotion right there, I just wanna just add on to the fact that, you know, what was communicated as far as the conversation that you have with young people is a hundred percent accurate. But even if you do everything right, even if you do everything that was just told, these situations could still go south. And going south doesn't always mean someone losing their life, right? I could tell you right now that for me, the worst traffic stop I've ever been a part of is not necessarily what took place physically, right? Well, I guess it was physical because it was the way they searched. But it's the feeling of being so vulnerable and so out of control of the current situation where you've done everything right, that that feeling stays with you forever, right? So what she talked about with her son, I wouldn't tell my mom either, right? Because why do I want you to share the pain and most importantly, the humiliation? Because now you're gonna ask me, well, what happened and what did they do? And I have to relive it. I have to tell you where they put their hands at when they searched me. I have to tell you how they handcuffed me. I have to tell you how they roughed me up when they put me in the back of the car for them to find nothing. So I, I think that we have to make sure that we understand the lived experiences that people go through because the same person, right, who you just swiped through their private part with your hand, you're gonna now ask them to cooperate, right? Are you gonna ask their cousin to cooperate? You're gonna tell them to trust you as law enforcement to rectify crimes and other negative activity in their neighborhood. And that's just a contradicting message that we're sending as government that we have to move away from. So I just wanted to kinda add a little bit to the emotional side of what people experienced when they pulled over because I agree with that conversation, but I just wanna be clear. Just because you do everything right, do not mean that you do not leave with some level of humiliation. Just because I didn't die or nobody broke my arm, don't mean that I'm not going to remember this experience for the rest of my life, because you do.
Yep, emotional scars really. You know, Autumn, I wanna thank you, and I really appreciate hearing your personal story about your son. Really hits home or, you know, feel that emotion. I think you did make the right move coming here from Philadelphia and making Pittsburgh your home. So, so you know, last but not least, we have two more speakers, okay? And I know he's chomping at the bit over there, Mr. Stevens. Yeah, so, so you know, I will tell you, we've had many conversations. Brandy and Tim and I have had many conversations. I really respect his. And I'll let you tell, you know, inform people of your past a little bit before you speak. But with that, Mr. Stevens, please.
I too want to thank you for the opportunity. And I want to thank Autumn for sharing that and sharing the emotions behind it. And for the councilman for sharing the emotions behind his experience because this is what we're talking about. And before I forget, I wanted to thank Councilman Thomas, Assistant Bradford Gray for coming in and being with us. This is important. And I hope that the statistics that you gave will be shared with all of council, including those who weren't able to stay or weren't here. This is recorded, so I'm hoping. I'm gonna ask, request, Council President, that anyone who was not here be requested. I was gonna say required, but y'all can't do that, I guess. But be requested urgently to look at this. Why do I say that? Some of you remember the name Bill Robinson. He sat at this table years ago as a council member. He was a council member of county council as well as city council. He was a state legislator out of this district, the Hill District area. Years ago, he and I were in a conversation in our Hill District office of where the Black Political Environment Project is, in the NACP office, we're side by side. And he had been in all those positions of leadership. And he said, Tim, the issue that I always hear that impacts black people the most emotionally is the relationship between the police and the, and black people. And all of his positions of leadership, he said, that was the one. And to your point, Autumn, October twelfth, nineteen ninety-five, Johnny E. Gamage died at the hands of suburban white police officers inside the city limits. I was president of the NACP in my first full year. And we spent time with Vic Valcheck, the ACLU. He and I co-chaired a number of community meetings that led to the original U and the Police, What to Do When Stopped By the Police: Rights, Realities, and Responsibilities. What Autumn just shared is why, if you go to my home now, there's papers all over the place. We have communicated with, with, with the school board on several occasions. We want every child to be instructed on that brochure every term, at least annually, but preferred, preferred every term. Erica Feerby Jones, Chief of Staff, has agreed with that. And said they had begun to do it. Now she has to confirm that they're doing it permanently. Why, and she even said, Tim, you shouldn't have to request this every year. It should be in the culture. Why is that? Because of what Autumn just said that she has to say to her child. My child is biracial, Hispanic and African American. He could get from either side. But almost every black parent has to say that to their parent, to their child. Some white kids are a little, are a little edgy and they need to be told that as well. But let's be honest, it's mainly black children and brown children who are affected by, by these issues. The numbers say what they say. One of the impacts that city council has to consider, and our friends from Philadelphia, we have, and I've said it from this podium a couple, two or three times at least, we have a re whitening of the, of the police force in Pittsburgh, a re whitening. When I was in the NACP in the seventies as executive director, soon after that, there was a lawsuit. And, and every four employees, there had to be a black and a female. And we came to a point by the councilman that we actually have reasonable numbers of black people and women on the force. At one point, I think women were at the top in the country in terms of percentage. If you look at the last several classes, you know, I think we mentioned this when Brandy and I were with you. The last several classes have been almost all white. Out of forty, there may be two black people or three of them. Three is a big number. There may be one Hispanic or none. So what happens when you go into a black community, it's like a white invasion force. Some people may find that brass, but it's true. I ask white people to think about it in reverse. If every time you had an incident, particularly in a predominantly white community, and the police came in and ninety-eight percent of them are black, you would begin, what, where are the white people? Yeah, I'm serious. Where are the white officers? So I want white people to understand, we're not just being difficult here. This is reality. And this is not someone selling a shirt at Macy's. You may not care who, I care because one of our initiatives of the Black Political Environment Project is Corporate Equity and Inclusion Roundtable. So that we want black people selling those shirts too. But, but that's a little less intense, who's selling your shirt than who, who may be arresting you potentially. So what we're talking about and have talked about in our letters that we've sent to this council people, a couple of things I'm gonna mention to make sure y'all remembered it if you didn't read it. The re whitening of the police force in Pittsburgh over the last several classes makes what we're talking about even more important than it did maybe when we were beginning to have some percentages that were reasonable. They are no longer reasonable. They are unreasonable. So when George Floyd decision was coming down, we had a press conference at our BPEP headquarters. And at that very moment, we were announcing a request, remember that, of the city council to consider police reform, legislation reform in terms of traffic stops. Now, I admit, we put in, I think, fourteen different, fourteen different pieces that you consider. And we knew you weren't gonna do all that. However, what we are happy to do and to say that you have begun the process. And that's a good thing. What we urge you to do is look at how you can expand significantly what the legislation and you have given us till, us collectively till, was it April? I think April or May, I think it was. Look at this legislation. One of our requests is that you make sure, and I talked to Ralph Bangs today, one of the great minds of Pittsburgh, out of the University of Pittsburgh. He has a report, I'm not gonna give it to you because he's still drafting it. But he has a report he's gonna be sending and sharing with city council, two reports. And he's a researcher. That's what he does from the University of Pittsburgh. And he's gonna be reinforcing what we've heard today and from David Harris and from our community partners. And I ask that you look at every word, not just look at and say, we got it, but seriously read it in depth because it's heavy. And it gives examples and what other cities are doing and how they're doing it. And going back to Councilman Thomas, that the stops are not producing the results that some people may think they produce because we're not the ones carrying all the weapons. Years ago, I think when I was executive director of the NACP in my twenties, there's a report that when people are stopped on the highways of life by state troopers or whatever, black people were being stopped more than whites, much more than whites. But yet, we were not the ones carrying the drugs. And there is reports that black people who do any kind of drugs are not doing it at any percentage higher than white people. And you've just said, Councilman, that in your studies with three hundred thousand stops in Philadelphia, that actually black people have less issues in terms of crime when they're stopped and what's going on in the car than white people. So in other words, white people who say, we're doing this because all these black people are criminals. Obviously, you don't know what the hell you're talking about. So we need to be honest and truthful about this if we're gonna do what we're gonna do. So I'm asking that in our letter that we sent on the twenty-eighth of December, we sent one on the twentieth of December also. The one on the twenty-eighth, we referred back to the one of the twentieth because it came from Randy Fisher representing APA, Vic Valcheck representing the ACLU and myself representing BPEP. Remember that? And a couple of points in the letter reinforcing what we heard today. We need time to ensure, this time is coming up, to ensure that the proposed legislation matches community needs to the fullest extent possible. And fullest extent is a key piece of the COHIL. Data collection or data, if you like that word better, regarding the reasons for the traffic stop. That has to be in there because otherwise, if you don't like, uh, black people, if you don't like, uh, people with long hair and have blond eyes or whatever, uh, you may stop people for whatever reason. And we're asking that these, the data show what is in fact happening, okay? So that is important. It's essential to ensure that the ordinance is full, fully operational and complete as possible. And that the secondary violations be expanded. The current list does not reflect those offenses. Community members feel need to be handled. Consideration be given to including pedestrian stops in the legislation. Not just traffic stops, but the stops on the street. I'm saying, because a lot of people don't get stopped in the car, but they get stopped on the street for whatever reason. Sometimes literally because they're walking while black or walking while Hispanic or whatever they may be. And we mentioned in this, from our friends from Philadelphia, we mentioned in our letter of December twentieth, the efforts to address the type of problems targeted in this proposal legislation should be fully examined with an eye toward how some of the Philadelphia legislative approach might be wisely incorporated into the newly proposed Pittsburgh legislation. So I thank you personally for coming in because it's absolutely in alignment with what we've asked for. So we've heard a lot of why, and the why is so deeply rooted through this, of this country and our city. And we are at a moment now that we expect those results to be accomplished and the legislation to be as wide and comprehensive as humanly possible.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. And, you know, on a personal note, I want to tell you, it's been a real pleasure working with you and talking to you about police reform. And to me, this is what police reform is about. We're here at the table. Everybody's voice is being heard. And whether it's adding to our current bill or not, you can count on me to, you know, support what you feel is important. So last but certainly not least, I'm going to open the mic. And then we're gonna hear from our council president, I hope, after she, after Brandy has finished, but. Yes, right, right, right. So, and Brandy, it's been a real pleasure working with you, you know, just to, you know, bounce ideas off each other. And now we're looking in other forms, other, other areas of police reform, which I think, you know, beyond what Mr. Thomas has introduced in Philadelphia and we're adopting, I think there's so much more and other avenues that we can look into. So with that, Brandy Fisher from the Alliance of Police Accountability, Laura is yours.
Thank you so much. First, I do want to just thank you for convening this because it wouldn't happen without you. So I appreciate that. And then also, I wanted to thank David Harris because we have been working with him for many years and doing this work. And he's been very consistent and dedicated, even though he's not directly impacted by this. I want to, and thank everyone for being here. I wasn't going to speak, Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith, because I felt like I convened a team that was going to convey enough. She made me come up from out the audience. That's what I'm saying, y'all. So I just, I just wanted to convene, but, you know, just to add on, and not to be emotional, but, you know, the reason why I do this work is because I am the mother of a black son. And my son is twenty-seven years old and a legal gun carrier. And so when I, when I watch the news and I see Philando Castile murdered and I hear justifications because, you know, this person had a weapon. That's why we, we thought he had a gun and that's why we shot him. You know, it, it worries me to my core. Every time I think about my son driving, and I've had this conversation with him, and he's adamant about his rights and not, you know, bowing down or not being able to live as everybody else lives. And he refuses to do that. And I, I respect it. But it doesn't change when my phone rings at one o'clock in the morning and it's him, the fear that goes through my body immediately. It doesn't change the fact that I know racial profiling is real, right? A part of the mission of our organization is to end racial profiling because of this impact, not just on mass incarceration, but on the mentality of our families and because it's real. And I don't expect people to care about that. I, I don't. But it still needs to be stated. But what I do expect people to do is to, to do their jobs and be responsible in doing that, right? Whether we're talking about council people or the police. And the reason why we are here today is y'all have seen me down here many times. I haven't been down here most recently because of the pandemic. But it is because this is necessary. It's not because we don't have anything else to do. And the fact, you know, you said our voices are being heard. And I wonder by whom when I look at the empty seats. The reason why we wanted to do this is because the lack of interest by council to hear from people about this issue. Not just us, but the public, you know, abroad. And, and so I just want to, us to, you know, be clear about, you know, this picture, about this topic, about the message it sends, about the importance to council or the lack thereof, when we set this date, you know, weeks ago, and everyone knew we were doing this today. And so that is in itself to me sends a message of how important that this matter is. And then lastly, the numbers do tell a story. But when you talk to people who experience this every day, the numbers make even more sense and tell a different story than what we hear. And I think that is the biggest, the biggest issue here. When we're dealing with making policies, changing policies and legislation is the interpretation of the data, right? If it's even collected. And so the very first thing I want to ensure is that by amendment is what I'm saying should happen. By amendment, we, we need to amend this current legislation to first include collection of to first include collection of data around the reason people are stopped. Because Teresa, you know, that's the, that's the biggest debate, right? We're like, our officers say this is what happens and this is what they're doing. And this officer is my friend and I believe him and I know he's a good officer. And so this is what's happening. And so I'm hesitant to support this or to, to make this amendment because of X, Y, and Z. But the fact of the matter is, no matter how friendly, um, we are, it's about a state of policing. Right? It's not about individual choices. It's about the state of policing. And when the data is telling you there's a problem, even if your friend is not the issue, policing and the way that it is done in this city is the issue. And if we're really serious about making an impact on the disproportionality for, of, of black people when it comes to traffic stops, then we're going to put our, we're going to, we're going to make sure we're passing legislation that does that. You know, we don't want to pass legislation just to say we passed legislation. We want to make an impact. And what we're saying is this current legislation in its current form, though it is awesome and an awesome idea, is not it. It is not going to give us the impact that we were looking for. It is not going to give us the solution that we say we are seeking by creating this legislation. Um, and so if we don't know why police officers are stopping people, um, then we are also, uh, we're, we're just continuing this disproportionate impact on, um, black communities. And, um, the other thing I wanted to highlight is that when we, we're talking about stop and frisk, and I know the stop and frisk bill came after we, we stated that pedestrian stops weren't in this bill, right? We all know the, the order of events and how this happened. Um, but warrantless search and seizures happen at traffic stops and warrantless search and seizures happen on the street. So we have a legislation that is covering warrantless search and seizures. Why are we exclude, why, why are we not making it across the board? Why are we saying only for pedestrians? Or we're doing this only for this reason? It, as many stated, it should just not happen at all. Right? If we're going to say that warrantless search and seizures, um, are a problem, then why are we still allowing them to happen, period? Right? And so we really want to, you know, um, uh, make sure that we are looking at the, uh, the systemic changes that need to happen. So we don't have to continuously chase every single case. You don't have people coming down here every time something happens because you're being proactive and ensuring, uh, the safety of individuals. And I would, um, move to say that public safety is, um, policing is, is not what's giving us public safety. Right? Public safety, uh, has entails a lot more than police officers, mass incarceration. Um, and public safety is about people thriving, people surviving, people being able to move freely through their neighborhoods like you want your children to do, like you're able to do. But we are sitting here telling you that that is not the case in our black communities in this city. Right? And, and, and because we are so segregated in a way that we are designed, we are able to pinpoint each black community. It also makes it possible for people who want to rage war against those black communities to know where to go and where to do that at. And when the numbers in those neighborhoods are higher than any other community in the city, the, then we cannot run away from the truth of what the data is telling us. And so, um, and no data collection is, is, is data as well. Right? And so the fact that we're not collecting data around the most controversial point surrounding these traffic stops, which is the reason, lets me know that we're not that serious about the changes we're claiming that we want to make. And so I'm hoping we can change that by the way that we move forward, that we are putting our actions where our mouth is, and that we can really make a huge impact on public safety, especially when it comes to black and brown communities. Thank you.
Brother Cohill, yes, two quick points, please. I forgot, sorry, Brandy. Real quick. The effectiveness of what we want to see happen will actually improve community police relations. Going back to what Councilman Thomas said, think about that. If all your interactions are basically negative and you feel like, I don't care, I, I would say there's has to be hardly any black male or brown male, and most black people are female. If they see a police car behind them, they're going to be a bit nervous. And I know a lot of white people are nervous, but they're nervous for different ideas. We're nervous because of what we've seen on TV for the last few years. Let's be honest. That's why BPEP wrote the, the original letter of the, all those. It was because I was having fits in my house watching what was happening to black and brown people on television. That's what led to that, to be honest. The other thing that's related is employment. I want you all to hear this because you may not have never thought about this. The stop over often over nothing that may lead to something often will affect the employment opportunities of black and brown people in this city, in this country. People don't think about that. In our corporate equity inclusion roundtable, our goal is to have black folks considered for employment from entry level to the C-suite. Okay? But that's impacted. When people come in with records. That's why we have, we've been advocating ban the box. So that's not on the application. It can be considered later, but not the first thing you see. But putting black folks and brown folks in these criminal situations, that's what's happening from the first stop, am I right, Brandy? That happens in the street. So I just wanted to add those two points that this is the power of this potential legislation to lower the probability and the possibility of these interactions occurring. And let's be honest, a lot of the police have to be nervous when they walk up to a car. They don't know what's going to happen to them. And then you have the legislature in Harrisburg passing legislation that said, you can have a gun on, you have to have a permit. Which I think is beyond ridiculous. I worked in a mental hospital for 31 and three quarter years. We had patients called pre-discharge, meaning they were about to leave. If I told them this, they would say, we may be mentally ill, but that's some crazy stuff. And what was passed in the legislature of Harrisburg. So I want to make sure we're tying all of this together because it is tied together in terms of its impact.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, and thank you, Brandy. And just on another personal note, I want to say, you know, I did, even though I'm the only council member that didn't support this bill originally, become a believer and not only in that, but, uh, you know, we've talked about how you want to add to it. And, um, as far as information data wise, I completely agree with that. So my office will work with you and Reverend Burgess to sponsor the bill and, um, you know, and I promise you I'll lobby, uh, my colleagues as to, uh, getting what we need to get in there, uh, to make everybody feel like their voices are being heard. So, um, you know, I want to introduce, everybody knows our council president, you know, she is an incredible woman. She fights for this city. She is, um, on the front line for us, no matter how controversial, no matter what the subject is. And, um, I have no better way to end it, um, than our council president Teresa Kills.
When you speak, could you answer why you chose to abstain? Why choose what?
To abstain on the vote.
I didn't abstain.
Oh, it says such an abstain. They have you down for?
No, I voted in favor. The first time I did it, I abstained, like I usually abstain on a Wednesday meeting and then I vote final vote. I, I don't, I think I voted both. But I could, I could abstain and I could do either word. I, I think I've explained, I think I've explained this. I'm tired of having these conversations. I think it's, it's, we've been working and meeting and for how, I mean, it's been years to be honest. It's been a long time. And I just want to get to a place where, okay, we've got this right. And, and that this, that people feel safe in the city. There are, I want to be very clear, my son's a police officer, not in Pittsburgh, he's a police officer. My future daughter-in-law, who is the mother of my, two of my grandchildren, is black. And having their conversations gives me a different insight, I think.
I bet it does.
You know, because I hear her fear, I hear, and it's with my grandkids. And then I hear my son's fear, you know, at the same time. So I think it really is a conversation that, and I think Brandy and I, that's one of the ways we met. Was we brought everyone together to try to work together, to try to get to a place where everybody felt a little bit more comfortable. But we did something then, but it should, the conversation should continue. Do you meet regularly, any of you, with our police department on, on your test?
Yep.
We have, every five weeks, we've been meeting for, we've had at least five or six meetings with the chief. Uh, the former Mr. Histrick, the current one was on the last meeting. Uh, usually a few commanders are on the call, a couple of commanders, some of our community partners. Uh, Kena James has represented the APA for the last few months on it. And we meet every five weeks on the BPEP request for, uh, police reform. It goes back to meeting Brandy and I were in together February 24th, 2020. These are the recommendations that the former mayor agreed to implement of October 9th, was his letter back to our July 8th meeting, uh, letter from 2020. And we've been reviewing since October 9th, uh, maybe a few months after that, we've been meeting every five weeks.
I want to say, I think our mayors, I, I'm just going to defend them all for a little bit here. They're in a bad situation, right? They're in a city that's predominantly white. They have a lot of businesses. They have a lot of the black community that they care about. And trying to find the balance between all that has got to be horrendous. It's going to be, I mean, really difficult. But I think if we come together and educate the community, I know you got a letter from one of my constituents who oversees a community group in my district, who was, she's black, was not supportive of any of this. And so I think she has very different reasons. So I'm, you know, and I, but I know that she's going to, she's going to speak her mind. She's not going to let anybody speak for her, you know what I mean? She's going to speak her mind. But I think that there are people that see things differently. So even in our black communities, they're not saying all the same things. And in our white communities, they're not saying all the same things. And our police officers in our, in our police department, we're starting to see some division because there's some newer, younger people who see things a little bit differently than people who've been here for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think our chief, uh, has done a lot to try to build police community relations. I think that, um, we, we need to do a little bit more like, that these meetings are not just ongoing meetings, but we have action items.
Such.
And that we're actually being able to deliver some real results. I hate, I hate putting legislation on the table, saying we did something, we did nothing. I hate putting things on the table, saying, or having meetings, saying we're doing something, we're not doing. I hate hearing people talk and then nothing happens. Um, but I also hate the dissension and I hate the tension between our police and our black community. Because in my area, there's a huge respect for the police from our black community. More so, when we talked about defunding, the people I heard from was my black community who almost ballistic with me. And, um, and there was a lot of it was, you know, charter cities predominantly black, but I think it's a class issue. Because they also have the highest homeownership in the city of Pittsburgh. So I think it's sometimes a class issue, you know, that, that we're starting to see. And so I think it would be helpful for us to do meetings with the police and the community and, and everyone coming together to try to figure out how we can help get to a good place. First of all, Councilman, I want to thank you. I thought you were so amazing at the, boy, I hope he runs for something statewide. Day that I can help support him. And I, you even gave me an idea for the, um, starting a children and youth, um, committee. I'm thinking, oh, we're going to add that to Reverend Burgess's committee because he's chair of public safety. No, what are you, Chair of Parks? Parks and Recs, I have to put it under there. But my concern has always been when we do things policing, I represent an area that borders the most boroughs in the city of Pittsburgh. So I have police that pull people over on, so if I have Steuben Street, we share it partly with Crafton Borough. We have Middletown Road, we share that with, um, Ingram Borough. We have Bangsville Road, we share it with Mount Lebanon. So there's a lot of different, you know, roads that are shared, you know, with other boroughs. And so if we do one thing, I'm afraid that my kids are going to have false pretense or false hope or something, or false sense of security that they can just drive and do whatever and one, and then as soon as they hit that, that border, they're pulled over. And we've had that happen, you know, numerous times. I think I called you about it, Brandy. Yeah. So I just want to make sure whatever we do that, that we're mindful of, you know, not giving kids a false sense of security, that we're actually doing things that are going to be helpful and beneficial. And, and I think that there's a plate, way to get to a place where we're working with both our police and our community and supporting one another. And I, I think this, I think a lot of people make a lot, profit a lot out of a lot of divisions. And this is one of them, I think. And it's sad to me because there's so many people brought down in the middle of it. And it doesn't need to be this way. And I, I would love to start something where we're working together on a more permanent basis. And that, um, we're yielding results and we have some real action items. So maybe if we, uh, work with, well, first, Councilman, I know Councilman Burgess leads this a lot of times and, um, he, he put the legislation on the table, so I know he'd be willing. But I think I'd also like to talk to our chairperson of public safety is Councilman O'Connor.
While we have him in the house, could he, he addressed that issue earlier, but could he readdress?
Say that about the state, but you're not talking about the.
Her situation is unique.
Yeah, you, you guys are definitely unique because you, we, Philadelphia is our county and our city. Right? So for you, you have county officers, right? So for us, our local counties are, are miniscule as it relates to the impact that they have on Philadelphia. Initially, when I first started my testimony, I tried to describe our city and our situation because I do recognize ours is different. And when you asked me, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, about, um, the other police entities, that's why I explained that our entities are, you know, universities and PHA and folks who have contracts with the city, which will force them to abide by that law. There are clear lines in the Philadelphia. When you leave Philadelphia and go into Sheltonham or, uh, Lower Marion or Dart, you know the difference. You're, it is a visible difference to when you leave the city of Philadelphia. So some of the issues that you have, um, and I'll give you another example when I, if Chief Public Defender could probably help a little better with this. You guys talked about, um, the issue around pedestrian stops. And that's not an issue for us, so it wasn't included in our legislation. And I'll let the chief public defender talk about that. But then what I also say is this too, and this is something that we should all know. Uh, State Rep Donna Bullock, um, out of the city of Philadelphia, who's, uh, the chair of the Black Caucus for the State House, introduced driving equality for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So not only are you looking at it as, uh, you're, as far as your municipality, we looked at it in our municipality and our county. But the entire Commonwealth is definitely going to look at the idea of driving equality being a state law. Now, we know Harrisburg is very different than Pittsburgh and Philadelphia. But, um, the dialogue is already happening. And I think that conversation will help you with some of your state partners as the appetite begins to increase in Harrisburg as it relates to driving equality. I think this is my last time speaking. So the last thing I just want to put an emphasis on, just listening to everybody, because this has just been great dialogue. I highly recommend that you include the data component in the legislation. And the reason I recommend that is because it protects you all as legislators. You're going to have people who are going to want to create their own narrative around the legislation and the impact the legislation have. You'll have some people who want to talk about public safety and the negative impact it has there. You're going to have people in communities of color who are concerned that people are using other stops. For us in Philadelphia, tent was a non-negotiable. For you in Pittsburgh, you might want tent in your legislation and you might amend the bill later because you find that maybe tent is a new tactic that's used instead of some other tactic that you, you know, moved to a secondary violation. You will not know any of that without the data component. And for us as legislators, we feel like that's the thing that makes us comfortable. I'll let Chief Public Defender talk about the pedestrian stops. Just because from a legal perspective, she knows it better based on a court ruling and what we were obligated to do in Philadelphia, which is why pedestrian stops were not in the legislation.
I just wanted to say that I think moving forward, I think there's a lot of divisions politically. I think there's a lot of divisions in our community. But I would like to see us come together on this and not allow those things to stop us from doing what's right, uh, for the city of Pittsburgh. And that we shouldn't just care about, um, yeah, we, I, I shouldn't say we shouldn't care. We shouldn't make this just a black and white issue. This is a Pittsburgh issue. And we should make sure that everybody feels safe in our city because we want people to come here too, right? And, um, and now we're talking about, you know, the Wilkinsburg and, and that, adding that into our city. And I want to make sure that our officers, if we would, you know, even work with them, that they have the same training as our officers. Um, or even further, I, I, I just think that, um, uh, but I do want to say, I think our officers are doing, uh, the best they can with everything that they do have. We don't, I think we've, I mean, everybody, nobody wants to see an incident happen. I mean, nobody. You'd have to be out of your mind to walk out in the morning and want to make this happen. And so I just want to make sure that we're working together to get to a good place. And so for that part, I want to thank you for having this meeting. I know, I was so surprised when he told me he was going to have it. And I think he's, he's shocked, you surprised me with, with all this stuff. And I, I think it's good that you're, um, taking the interest. I think you, you know, working with Reverend and Councilman Laval and, uh, Councilman O'Connor, um, and, and all of council. I think it'd be good for us to also include the administration moving forward and making sure that we're working together, for the best interest of all our police officers, all our residents, our black community. And everybody, uh, that we want, we want them to feel welcome in the city of Pittsburgh and safe. Everybody, I mean, nobody should have to drive down a road and have their heart racing because they're afraid they're going to get whatever.
I will respond very briefly.
Or be, or have your heart racing because you're going to pull somebody.
Yeah, Brandy, can we, uh, just to leave to, yeah.
3:30.
Yep. Go ahead, Reverend Burgess.
I'm just going to say thank you.
All going to be late.
Thank you, Brandy, for your years of commitment to this work. Um, thank you, Councilman, uh, for coming all the way from Philadelphia, bringing, uh, lovely and capable, um, 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 legal expert to come and to, uh, solidify your, your. bringing uh, lovely and capable um, um, legal expert to come and to uh, solidify your, your, your efforts. Thank you for all of our guests who who have come. We are indebted for you. Tim, I have been your friend and your fan all of my adult life. Um, I have.
Started last week.
I've been blessed, I've been blessed to to be a witness of what God can do. And that's how I view my role. Um, I've been able to to pass um, lots of stuff in terms of gun violence and um, uh, police reform and housing. And I'll continue that work. Um, it takes, so I'll, I'll be very quick of what I've learned and maybe it may be helpful to someone. We've passed legislation called Black Pittsburgh Matters. And that has three components. And that is Black Lives Matter, which is the health and safety of black people. Black Communities Matter, which is to um, transform black communities from communities of isolated poverty into mixed income communities. And that Black Wealth Matters, which is increasing employment and wealth among black people. Um, what I say is I want every person to be safe and healthy in Pittsburgh. I want every person to live in a good uh, middle-class, robust community with amenities. I want every person to have employment if they want and wealth if they don't have it. Um, but in order to do that, my faith tells me we have to do this with the least among them. And in Pittsburgh, the least among them are black people. And so my commitment to get to everybody starts off in an equitable form with black people and black communities. And so um, everybody's right in helping black people, we're all right, everybody's right. That what's wrong about is no one intervention will help us. You have to do all of it at scale at once, right? We have to build, grow new housing at scale, reform police at scale, employment at scale. And that's the work. Um, and um, but we, we do it together. I'm, I'm grateful for President Smith, her leadership, and grateful um, for Mr. Coghill, him and I, we, we are, it's funny, uh, people who do not know us is that we're friends, you know? We don't always agree, but we always talk and agree to be friends. And so um, we are, this is an interesting moment in history of our city, right? We have an African-American mayor, the first time. We have the most experienced council probably in its history. And so we have a chance of traumatic, of dramatic change. The real question is the resources, right? Are we going to put the money into the things that will change the quality of life for black people in Pittsburgh? Which means to reallocate resources from, and we just have, we just had a bridge fall down, right?
Yes, we did.
And so I'm, I'm, I'm been clear, you know, we're not taking money from, we're not taking money from anti-violence prevention stuff. We're not taking money from housing to do that. We had to find out some new money. So um, my point though is thank you, my real point is thank you for coming. I've been doing this, I I've, I've been doing this before I was a member of council. I've been in this work, Jesus, I'm old, twenty years. I've been doing this work um, twenty years. Um, and um, I, I am more hopeful today than I have been since I began this work that we can do some things that are significantly um, to impact the lives of black people. So thank all of you for your work, thank you for this moment. I'll be Matt, running partner. Thank all of you, all of you for being here at at three-thirty um, to talk actually about Wilkinsburg. We are, we're looking to annex another city. Not that we're going to do that. There's a, there's a, there's a, there's a borough right beside us that is about uh, sixty percent black um, that connects to primarily my council district. And we voted to not annex it this year, but there's a discussion of perhaps doing it. That I am, I'm a part of, so I have to go do that. But thank you, listen, come back again, we'll get some fruit, get some ribs, fish and chicken.
Ribs.
Right, right, right.
Wait, I, I wanted to speak first real quick because I heard this twice and I think it might be a, a real issue when it comes to the legislation. Um, Councilman Coghill brought up, you know, um, law enforcement's concern about um, the universities and other police departments, which is something we've talked about a lot. We have two hundred and twenty-seven police departments in Allegheny County. Um, and so, um, and then I heard, um, just uh, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Cal Smith just highlighted the same issue. And so what I wanted, what I want to say is that, one, um, we often say that we can only worry about the city. Right? When we want to do things that impact the county, we can only worry about the city. And so I just want to reiterate that is that we have to just worry about what we're responsible for. Right? I have to worry about my home, not my neighbors. Um, I have to worry about my home first. And so when we dirt criminalized marijuana here in the city of Pittsburgh, it was a similar thing because it was here in the city of Pittsburgh. And I think um, Councilwoman Strasburger said it best before she left is that we're responsible to make sure Pittsburgh is safe. So no matter what anybody else is doing, we have to make sure we're doing our job. And what I would behoove you to do is maybe um, uh, you know, look at what uh, Councilman Thomas is doing and connecting with other council people in other places. Um, if you are passing something in your city and you feel that it may be, it may have a negative impact of others around you don't follow, then instead of not doing it here, I think you maybe should have conversations with them to encourage them to do it in their places. Um, so that way, um, instead of us, instead of us not, you know, doing what we need to do for public safety, we're actually making sure people are safe everywhere.
That's why she's my civil rights daughter, because that's what I was going to. So seriously, let us lead. Pittsburgh is the main city in Allegheny County. Let us lead, let others follow. Because it's going to become obvious, well, maybe we need to change what we're doing in our little boroughs because Pittsburgh is doing this and it's becoming awkward. So let's reverse the thinking and say Pittsburgh is doing this. So you little burbs around the city, maybe you need to think about altering what you're doing. Instead of us uh, just saying, well, we can't do it because all these little boroughs aren't going to cooperate or support. Maybe let's take the lead.
Yeah, so I'm going to add to that right now, so thank you. But I will say that, and I want to be very clear.
Yes, ma'am.
I am not saying that we shouldn't do it. I'm saying, don't pretend that we're going to do something to help black children and they're going to get pulled over and something different is going to happen in the borough, just so we can say, we did something. Let's do something that's really going to impact their lives for real. And not just pretend we're going to impact their lives. And then I want to say also that we can also talk to the county, and we have done that before. And that if, in terms of the decriminalization of marijuana, we did and we did not get a response. And so we do try to go beyond, I mean, we did it here and then we tried to go beyond and it didn't happen. But we could also go together to the state and ask the state laws to change. That's some things that we can, that could be in one of the action items.
Philadelphia will join us, we will join Philadelphia.
State reps do. Philadelphia state reps do.
So before we close, so before, Councilman Wilson, uh, thank you for rejoining us. And I do want to say one thing to you, Brandy, um, as far as the lack of council people here, we have the majority, we had the majority here to begin with. Um, but you know, all of our council members are very engaged in police reform, whether it be this bill or bills to come in the future. This is going to be well-publicized, we're on air, it's being viewed around the city right now and it'll be, I think, live on YouTube.
Yeah, and members watching.
And yeah, I know Councilman Lavelle, you know, couldn't join us, but I know him, he's going to watch it and he's going to, he's going to look at everything it said. Particularly when it comes to, uh, you know, your, your data piece, piece. So, so Councilman Wilson, did you have anything to uh, to to add? I didn't know if you had any other questions and then we'll let these folks, you know, uh, get on their way.
Yeah, I want to, you know, just thank everyone for coming, but you know, I just think, um, you know, my, I was bringing up earlier was just that, you know, I was alluding to a um, a co-response model that Pittsburgh has created. Uh, essentially, AHN, we partner with the public health system. So I think when we talk about, you know, what happens to people that are uh, being pulled over, you know, in in a lot of different situations, then uh, could become incarcerated uh, without being charged yet and you know, all the different effects that can happen through the system. Uh, this outreach program is doing um, diversion like every day, you know? And 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 so I just want to, I don't want to lose focus of what this conversation is. And specifically what, I know we're talking about traffic stops, but um, you know, there is a, an overdose crisis, you know, all across the state and specifically here. And how the Pittsburgh, how the city and Allegheny County can work together is, is uh, during this crisis. Um, we're losing more people to overdose death than we are uh, in the way of a motor vehicle accident or um, a shooting. So it's exponentially more. And actually, uh, the, the stats are here, it's affecting the black community the most right now. Um, it's, you know, the pandemic has not been at all uh, friendly towards the, you know, the black community in terms of the, the recent spike with overdose. So uh, sorry, I'm using this moment to talk about, talk about this, but I think it's important to recognize, you know, what we're talking about here is much larger than just like that, there's one tail light out, you know? And so I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, and Councilman Wilson, uh, you know, I want to say, we had a meeting with the county executive the other day discussing mental illness and, you know, avenues that we're going to be looking into. I look forward to working with you on that. I think we should have a separate post agenda on that once we gather our information.
Yeah, you know, I got to commend you because I think a lot of what we're talking about here is trying to break down uh, the barriers to this conversation. And I was extremely pleased to know that, you know, you put this together. This is the direction you, that you've taken this post agenda. And I'm happy to, you know, talk and work with you on the several other meetings to try and address like, you know, we need to get in every room we can to talk about these issues.
Yep.
So happy to work with you.
Yep.
I work with you, Councilman Thomas. President Cal Smith, so um, everyone, everyone here.
And everyone else.
My, my, my mode is to go with the, you know, thanking electors first and then do the whole, yeah, so um, I appreciate everyone. Yeah, we work together.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson, yes. And uh, you know, I just want to say, first of all, our council president, she's incredible. It's like she has eight children between our council members. And I want to thank you for staying here. I see her phone is just like blowing up next to me with other council members and media and everything else. But, you know, thank you for all you do for us as a body, we really appreciate that. And uh, you know, I especially want to thank all of our guests, each and every one of you. I thought we, you know, had a very productive, very constructive meeting. Councilman Thomas, uh, Dawn and Care, thank you so much for traveling across state. You know, it was very important, um, you know, we were going to do everything, of course, digitally originally. But um, when he mentioned, when Councilman Thomas said, are you meeting person? And I said, get him over here. So couldn't be more pleased that you came. And and any final comments on your part before we close the meeting?
Thank you for having me, it's a blessing and looking forward to exploring a great city. Thank you, thank you for the great work you're doing.
Great. Well, listen, thanks, thanks again for everybody and uh, until we meet again, this meeting's adjourned.